Okay, so are we called to order yet?
No.
No.
Okay. Well, then let's do that. Let's call this meeting to order. And it is 5:56 and it's all my fault. So we'll go fast. Do we have anything that anybody wrote in for open forum?
No ma'am.
Okay, then I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Okay, and I need a second? Second, great. Are there any questions about anything that we've received? Joanne, would you like to add anything to your director's report?
Actually, I will add something. I-
Okay.
There have been some changes in personnel now.
Okay.
Perry Stevenson put in his notice to resign. I mean, he gave two weeks' notice. And Monday was his last day. And so before advertising outside of the agency, we advertised in-house. And we had a couple of people interested, but only one submitted an application. And we promoted Mike Motley to facility supervisor.
Oh wow, okay.
And he started in that position today.
Awesome.
Yeah, so we also have an ad- submitted an ad to hire a maintenance worker too. And I guess we got six applications through indeed. And one of them looked really good, so we got him on the phone today and did an interview. Over the- we were going to do Zoom, but he didn't have the Zoom- or he had- he was having trouble getting onto Zoom. Anyway, so we interviewed him over the phone and that went very well. So we're waiting on background check to make a formal offer.
Okay.
Once again, have a formal ma- maintenance- or a full maintenance crew.
And that would be- And that's backfilling Mike Motley's position, is that what you're doing?
Well, kind of. Mike was- Mike was just kind of a jack of all trades. Mike was hired initially as a Section 8 inspector.
I know, yeah.
The- the Section 8 administrative fees being funded at only like 82% or something like that. The Section 8 budget was having a difficult time holding his wages.
Okay.
So we- and he wasn't staying busy with Section 8 inspections, especially after the COVID. So he was doing some other administrative things for Section 8, but he was also doing public housing inspections. So we started funding that position at different percentages out of public housing. More and more, the Section 8 budget could not afford it. And in order to keep Mike busy, we sent him out on the unit turnover crew. And he's real good at doing floors, so mainly he was out doing the tile floors. And he's been kind of helping carry out with supplies and that kind of thing since the COVID and we're not doing inspections. And he's got- he came to us from K-State where he worked in the facilities maintenance. And of course, before that, he owned Kerry Company and then BD4. So he's got quite a bit of knowledge, so. So by filling the maintenance worker too, I mean, yes and no. Budget-wise, yes, we're kind of backfilling his position. We are concerned that the Section 8 budget cannot- the budget cannot hold an inspector any longer. And so Catherine is probably going to start doing her own inspections once they resume.
Okay.
So you said- so, but you said there were two inspectors. One is public housing, one is Section 8.
Oh, Mike was doing both.
Both, okay. The Section 8 side couldn't hold up its end, okay. Okay, thank you. I appreciate knowing how it works.
Okay. Anything else in the director's report?
Um-
Anything else?
I- I just am curious, by now you have hired someone to do a new web. And are we benefiting from some of the recruiting things we put in motion several months ago? Because our numbers look a little like we were up to 80 at the high-rise and now we're down to 68. Or what's the story with the- with the web? And how the advertising's working? You just had some consultants maybe, or what?
We had, I think the way it was worded in the previous reports was that we had 80 people who had moved in. And then after that, it listed the number of people who had moved out. So, I mean, that number is ever-changing. But that- I don't know that we ever had 80 at one time living in the apartment.
I don't think we did either. I don't think we did either.
And the numbers are going down a bit at the towers because we've had some who have- well, we've had one death. We've had two evictions. One of them for illegal activity. And we've had a couple others that have gotten Section 8 and have moved- or more than a couple, and have moved on. So getting those refilled has been the same ongoing challenge. So, yes, we are advertising. And Patrick has- we actually got a slew of applications in. And when was that, in June? And so Patrick is working with every single applicant that we have on the waiting list for the one bedroom. And he has enough applicants to fill every single slot. Now whether or not all of them will be eligible or not, you know, is another question. But right now, our lowest waiting list is just a three-bedroom. That's where we're needing applicants right now.
Is that right?
We need applicants for all bedroom sizes, but three-bedrooms is depleted.
What is our turnaround time approximately on an application right now? Is it- is it slow or fast based on kind of the employee level and what we're seeing?
A lot of it depends on- it's faster now since we have the waivers and we can accept self-certifications and pay stubs as the highest hierarchy in the hierarchy of certifications. But there's just not a solid number because a lot of it depends on the applicant. If they turn all of their information in when they're supposed to, if they have to go get some of the information to get to us, and how many times Patrick has to follow up with them. You know, sometimes initially, they might be a proposed denial and they appeal and it's turned over. The appeal might be reversed or not. So there's no just set time, but he's turning them as quickly as he can.
Just because I don't know that I have a concept. What is a ballpark though? Like, is it usually a week for something that kind of flows correctly? Or is it a month? Or what's the- what's kind of the projected goal?
Yeah, the goal is always as quick as possible. And for the apartment towers, I mean, well, what I was going to say is the unit has to be ready also. For apartment towers, that's definitely not a problem. But I've seen it done in a week, Jamie, and I've seen it take up to a month or more if it's a complex one or, you know, it's just hard to get the information. But I would say an average would be maybe two and a half to three weeks sometimes. But sometimes things, you know, somebody comes in and has everything right there and we don't have to wait on background checks or, you know, get confirmation on those or have questions about them. They can go pretty quickly. But, you know, Patrick's also working with a lot of applicants at one time. So, you know, he has to kind of filter through them every day and see what he needs from each one.
And where are the three bedrooms that are available?
The three bedrooms, I believe, are at Ottawa and East Court and Edson, mostly. There are a couple available out of Flint Hills, too.
Oh wow, so there are several.
Yeah.
Isn't that interesting? They're usually so short. They're usually booked up.
Yes. And my concern is- yes?
Do you have any sense that when the students start coming back the first of the month, that you might get some business from that group?
Yes, I do. And I do have a contact at K-State that I've already given information to and I think I'll follow up some more with that or have Patrick. But, you know, generally, they're going to be one-bedroom or studio apartment. Some of them are going to be paying.
Right.
But-
Which is what we want to fill in the- that's what we want to fill in the high-rise, so.
Yes, yes, absolutely. One of my concerns is that when this eviction moratorium is over, we have about 20,000 or more in outstanding rents that people have not paid rent since the eviction moratorium went in. And as I said before, we're going to work with them as best we can, but we have to have their cooperation. I do know that the emergency shelter got a grant that is going to be able to assist with rent. And I know they're working out the details of how they're going to give me that money out. And Emily did contact me and ask if- or I guess they were just kind of brainstorming if they could spend just a couple days a week in the beginning to come over and meet with clients in our office to see if they can provide some assistance. And we'll absolutely give her some space to do that. So hopefully, you know, there'll be enough assistance out there that can get them caught up or help them get caught up. Some of them are quite a bit behind. And I'm sure there'll be caps on the amount of assistance they can get so that we don't have to see an influx of vacancies because people are not paying their rent. On the footside of that, it can be a marketing tool as well because I'm sure there's a lot of tenants out on the private market who are struggling and unable to pay their rent, so.
It'd be good if we could maybe ask some other organizations if they've gotten similar grants or if there's any opportunity for us to get somebody to commit to a grant to help our clients. Not that it would go specifically to us, but a grant that goes towards housing authority tenants. And it might be worth reaching out to the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation or somebody to see if they have any suggestions in that.
Yeah, I can reach out to Vern. And I did have a call from, I believe it was Westview Community Church, from their outreach person. And she was wondering if, you know, we had some clients that they might be able to focus some assistance to. And she and I played phone tag for a couple of days and I haven't heard back since the last time I called her. So I'm hoping she's just out of town or something and will reach out again. But I do have her name and phone number. So, and I think there's going to be more resources pop up pretty soon. It's just, you know, those grants weren't right there and available early on. And some of them may still be pending the application.
Okay. Anything else?
Nothing, that's it.
Okay.
I would just say that I was a bit surprised, given the discussion we had at the last meeting about the RAD proposal, to see that an RFP has been prepared to do a comprehensive needs assessment. And so it is moving along without us even knowing that things are happening in this month.
I have not sent that RFP out yet, Linda. I had to make some changes and revisions to it.
Linda, I think that we gave her permission to do that last time.
I don't think it said that in the minutes is all I was- I was just- I was- I just re-looked at the minutes. So maybe I- maybe I went through them too fast, too.
Linda, it might have been the time before. Because I don't remember when that phone call was, but it was before the last meeting.
Yeah, Joanne reported on the phone call in the June 17 minute.
Right.
Anyway, I'm just- it says that the application was submitted by the field office staff. And anticipated to be approved in Joanne's update today.
The application for technical assistance.
RAD technical assistance, I don't know what that is. RAD technical assistance. Maybe- maybe you should just brief us. And maybe in the future, we need an item on our agenda each month for an update so that we are informed. This is- I mean, it's just, I'm not reading the words as you would interpret them, I guess.
Well, I know that we did discuss it. The- I think the RFP, I thought I was almost done with it at the last meeting. I may have failed to put it in the minutes. And I apologize for that. The technical assistance application is something that's submitted by the field office to headquarters to get somebody from the RAD department to- they'll give us 16 hours of technical assistance in understanding some of the processes with RAD and some of the implications and the various programs and to help show us how they would affect us. And I really don't know how that technical assistance comes. Whether it's via phone calls, via emails, or webcasts. I'm not sure how that occurs. I have not heard that it's been approved. The field office has told me they expect that it will be approved. But I have- I've not been advised that it has or has not.
Okay. I concur to Linda's idea that it'd be on the agenda each month to give us an update on that particular issue. That way, we won't forget.
This is a big deal. Bigger than renovating the high-rise.
Yeah, it's a big deal. Okay, anything else in the consent agenda? I call the question.
Linda?
Uh, yes.
Libby?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Ida?
Yes.
Good to see you, Ida.
Yep, I was late because I was at a doctor's.
Ah, okay.
I'm glad you got in. Commissioners comments? Anybody got anything to say? Okay, old business. Update on COVID operations?
You know, there's- that's kind of an ongoing agenda item. I don't have too much to update. We did not open on July 15. I just don't like the numbers that are out there. I know that this is going to have to happen sooner or later. It seems like the new cases are starting to get less and the active cases are starting to get less. So I anticipate it's going to be August 1. I just am so concerned about the public. And our office is very small and it's going to be really difficult to limit the number. We can literally have two, maybe three people in the front office lobby and maintain a six-foot distance between them.
Yeah, I would think only two. I think two.
And with the mask requirement, we have got plenty of masks. Probably 3,000 masks. But there's one person at that front desk who is going to have to control the flow of people in and out and ensuring that they have masks on and dealing with non-compliant persons and what have you. So the rest of us will help out, obviously, as much as we can. But we don't have, like, you know, when you go into a store, a lot of times there's somebody, most of the time, there's somebody standing at that front door to count people in and out and make sure everybody has a mask on and what have you. And we just don't have that person that can do that, to stand at that door.
So what's the rush in trying to open sooner rather than just holding off?
I- I guess I don't really have a good answer for that, Kennedy. You know, I think things are going well. We are able to accomplish what we need to accomplish with our clients and with the public through email and Zoom and phone and- and what- and, you know, other ways. So I guess there's not a big rush. It just seems like we've been closed for so long. I miss my people.
I think it's a justifiable reason. I mean, the last thing you want is to be responsible for any of the staff getting ill, especially when you had options.
Yeah, you're right.
And you too.
We are- we are continuing to watch the numbers, you know. And until we're all comfortable, like, until I'm comfortable with opening that door, I just don't see it happening.
I don't think that we know what's going to happen in this town and this county until after 10,000 students come back to campus.
Yep, and you may-
And I-
The last thing I want to do is open and have to close again. Kind of like the school.
Absolutely.
Don't want to send the kids back and then have to send them home again. So I guess that's one of the reasons I'm being uber-cautious and- but I think Jen made a very good point. When the students start coming back, that could have a big impact on what happens as well. Literally, everything is being canceled, it seems like. And today, we had a conference call with Kansas-Narrows. You know, we were hoping to be able to have a conference by September instead of having it in May when we were originally scheduled. Then we decided on our call to not have the conference in September in person. We're going to do virtual meetings, but nobody is comfortable enough yet.
No.
I am not comfortable on your behalf and I am waiting. I think the kids will start coming in the end of the month because they'll be taking- they'll be moving into apartments. If- my feeling is that if 10% of the athletes tested as positive and we bring 10,000 kids into town and 10% of them are not being tested but might be sick, I don't see that we can take any risks in opening up. I don't- as long as you were doing our job, as long as you are accomplishing our mission, I see no reason to put you guys in jeopardy. You're doing your work, just keep doing it the way we're doing it.
Yeah. The only-
I agree.
-concern that I have is, you know, I know there are work orders out there that need to be done and they're being called in and we're responding as long as they're emergencies. But maintenance, it just gets further behind also. And maybe we can work out a plan where we kind of graduate them. We had started having every resident fill out a questionnaire about if they'd been sick or had symptoms or been to a hotspot before we closed.
Okay.
Before they went into their unit, so. And some residents, I think, really don't want to send their units yet. And I don't blame them.
Well, if they have a work order, is it possible to implement a process where everyone in the home would have to have a mask as well as the person going to provide the maintenance if they wanted service? And other than that, they just get on a- they just- they're just on a-
Yes, and we had also started before we closed having the residents, either they had to stay in a whole different room or stay outside or stay away from the maintenance person doing his work when they were in there. But we just- I'm sorry?
That's a good idea. Plus I- plus the masking, plus what Kennedy said. I think we should do both of those and let the guys go fix stuff, but make sure that they're protected as well.
Yes. Well, okay, well, we will not get in a hurry, but we will open when we can, when we feel it safe.
Yeah, and I think that as long as, I mean, because at this point, we're having plumbers who come into the homes and things like that. So I think as long as people understand, like, we're going to take- these are going to- if you come up with policy and guidelines, this is what's going to happen for non-emergency maintenance and you can opt in or out. But if you don't do those things, then you need to understand that our maintenance person isn't obligated to stay.
Yes.
And then you go to the bottom of the list.
Yes, I totally agree.
Check with other housing authorities about how they're doing it. I'm sure you're on a listserv with that kind of stuff.
Yes.
But I don't- I don't see, I mean, as far as the office there, I don't think you're going to be opening, to tell you the truth. I think our students-
Not for a while.
The leases start August the 1st. And by two weeks later, we're going to see an uptick here. And once all the students get here, we're going to see another one. So, and I'm not just a doomsday person. It seems to me that's a real-world future, so.
I mean, 60% is from that demographic, correct? Almost 60% of the infections are from that demographic of people.
The new ones. Yep, the new ones, that's true.
So anyway, I don't know about the work order. Working in the units is something a little different than your office staff. So, you know, but I think there are issues in those units that, you know, you don't want to let them pile up. You're going to get an inspection when this is over and we're going to be fried. So we've got to try to keep them. I guess they're going to be, those new units, the empty units are going to be painted and lovely, right?
They're not.
Okay, thanks.
I agree with Kennedy. I think if you make up a list of rules for this situation and tell client tenants that, you know, you have to be outside or in another room and you have to be wearing a mask and you have to do X, Y, Z, and you make a list. And if they're willing to comply with that, then your guy is willing to come in. And if they're not, he's not. But I agree with Linda that we need to not let stuff pile up.
There's some balance somewhere.
Oh, I-
Okay.
It's a matter of modifying the procedure that we already had in place, so.
Yeah. Okay, we have to do this executive session, not want to do it, but we have to do- I don't want to do it, but we have to do it. So I need, I don't want to talk about this. We need a motion to go into executive session. And I would say for not more than half an hour, who wants to make the motion?
I move that we move into executive session for thirty minutes.
For the purpose of-
Second.
Which is about seven o'clock, what?
For the purpose of-
For the purpose of non-elected personnel or something, I'm, hold on.
Yes. We need a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we got it.
And further, that the, that at the close of the executive session, the board will reconvene and take action as deemed appropriate. I guess I need to add that to the motion.
No, well, okay. Okay. All right, so here we are, turn off the microphone. No, I need a roll call. We all saw your letter. We all saw your letter. I need to do roll call. Oh, okay, do it. Linda?
Yes, I'm here.
Voting on the motion.
Okay.
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ida?
Yes.
You want to go close my door?
Okay, has, and did everybody receive? Okay, tell me when it's back on.
It's on.
Ready?
Yes.
Okay, so we have closed the executive session and there is no action to be taken at this time. Is there any further business for this meeting?
No.
Okay, and I say we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Okay?
Stop the- Stop the recorder.